Good evening, everyone. We're ready to start the work session on City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. Before we begin, we are joined by Councilman Carl Stokes standing. To his right is Councilwoman Nick Mosby. To his right is Councilwoman Ricky Spector. To her right is Councilman Bill Henry. To my left is Councilman Eric Costello. To his right is Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton. To my immediate left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. We're also joined by Angela Gibson from the Mayor's Office, Kara Curtz from President Jack Young's office.
Thank you.
Paul Plymouth from President Young's office. Councilman Bobby Curran is here. Also, we have our attorney, Mr. John Willis. And the staff person to transform is Executive Director, Mr. Larry Green. And this is not a hearing. We're not taking any public testimony. Our next Transform Baltimore hearing is scheduled for October the 13th at 5:00 PM in the City Council chamber. So, any amendments or whatever, you can bring that to the hearing next October the 13th. But at this time, I'm going to call on Kara Curtz.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Kara Curtz on behalf of City Council President Young. I just wanted to briefly go over what has been handed out to the committee, the agency reps present. And this will also be posted online at Baltimore.Legistar.com on the bill's file page. There will also be paper copies available in the office of the Executive Secretary, Natwana Austin, as well as in the Department of Planning. So, what was handed out tonight to the committee members and other council members present was a binder of material and a separate binder-clipped set of pages. Within the binder is an interlineated unofficial draft of the bill reflecting the amendments, which are behind the interlineated version of the bill. There is also a repeal and replace of the tables. What was discovered as we attempted to integrate all of the committee amendments into the tables is that it became impossible to read in format. So, it's a repeal and replace. So, it appears to be a clean set of tables, but the tables should reflect all of the amendments adopted by the committee through May of 2016. Of the amendments, there were approximately 350 sent upstairs. They have boiled down to 108 pages of amendments. There's 248. When you look through the sets of amendments, you'll note that there are some additional notes. There's a total of 14 queries and 38 notes throughout where issues either substantial or stylistic or other things have been identified that need some sort of a resolution on. So, we've handed all of that out. And again, it will be posted online, most likely this evening, to Baltimore.Legistar.com on the bill's file page. The separate packet, just because it got printed later and there wasn't time to put it in the binders, is a list of the map amendments that were submitted to the committee, up to and including last Wednesday, the September 28th hearing. I can speak less to those. They were compiled by Paul Plymouth along with Lori Feinberg on the Department of Planning. So, that's all I have. If there are any immediate questions?
Any questions from the committee or council people?
Great.
Yes. Lori?
I'm going to explain for the council members. The spreadsheet of map amendments should be in council district order. We just delivered to the staff a slightly cleaner version that's a separate document in PDF of each district. So, you can...
That's what it's printed.
And that's... Oh, that's what they have. Okay. I'm sorry. So, different version. And then, the maps will be online. There are new map numbers in many cases. We had to do that because many of the districts had so many new amendments that came in at the last minute in order to sort of keep the numbering working. So, I would encourage you and your staff who are checking through that to kind of use the old ones to mark up your new ones because the numbers will not, in all cases, line up. And we're available if there's any technical questions on that.
Yes. Councilwoman Curran?
Yes. Go ahead. Ms. Feinberg? On District 3, and it's hard to find, there's only a quarter page. There's a planning commission recommendation for 3615 Harpert Road to go from R3 to R5. It may feel community has indicated that that may be a problem for them. How would I remove that map request change from the planning commission approval?
My understanding is that it's up to the committee to vote yes or no on each individual amendment.
So, the committee would have the one to...
Right.
Okay.
Regardless of the source of the amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
And the Councilwoman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lori, so the packet that we just received with the old amendment numbers, there is a packet that the Department of Planning...
No, it's all one packet. What you received today is the correct updated version.
I'm good. Thank you.
Any other council people, any other council persons want to discuss any of their amendments during the work session? Going once? Councilwoman Clark? Yeah, Councilman?
I'd like to discuss the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Does someone...
Mr. Chairman?
It's Warren. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to thank you and the committee in planning and all involved this for the last two and a half, three years, I think, or however long it's been going on. I've attended several of the off-site, early-on hearings that we've had at different locations. But obviously, I've taken the will of the committee has to transform Baltimore to be in shape. But with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be on record that on the third district, which is only two map requests come from me, one is going to be removed, that's M179, 5717 to 5723 Harpert Road, was going to go to C2, but removing that from the map request change, I want to go on record to say that.
Okay.
And also, removing the one from the planning commission I just mentioned, that 3615 Harpert Road. So, I don't know when the process is, the committee votes on that. Is that going to be the night, Mr. Chairman, or the 13th?
We're not voting on it tonight, but Councilman Curran, what you can do is...
I'll send an email to you and the committee members.
What you want to do is you could talk to Paul Plymouth or Kara regards to...
I've been touching Paul for the last three months on this, and all the work that they've done, I want to thank them. So, I'll be in touch with them concerning removing these, the ones I just mentioned. But I just want to go on record as saying that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You want to talk about your...
Oh, okay. Sure.
Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have an amendment that began... That's the first of three amendments that go together. And the first one was adopted. And what this is about, as you're familiar because we've discussed it at the hearings, one of our prominent business associations, Hampden Village Merchant Association, suggested this, but it's really important for the whole city. It's a citywide zoning legislation. What it does is it defines big box stores. And that is a definition that was adopted by this committee. And I'll read you that, and then I'll just tell you about, I know we're not voting tonight, the other two amendments I'll be offering when we are voting. Retail big-box establishment is any single-use commercial building, whether standalone or within a multi-building development wherein such single-use establishment occupies at least 75,000 square feet of gross leasable area. That was adopted, that is in the draft that we received tonight. What we never got to were the details that came in later sections of the code. And so, it doesn't matter if you have a definition of use unless you say where you can have it, where you can locate it, where does it go, where does it not go. So, basically, the most important amendment is... And here's what it is. And on these sheets... Oh, do we have copies of these sheets, Stephanie, or am I just... Excuse me. Do we have copies of this that we could give to the committee, please? This, I have a proposal that retail big-box establishment would be allowed as a conditional use through the zoning board in the C3, C4, and C5, these are commercial districts. It would not be allowed at all in the C1 and C2 districts, or the C1VC district, because they're big. And the idea is to avoid turning main streets or local neighborhood retail areas, just tearing down a block of them, God bless you, to create some big-box building inappropriately sized and scaled for a local shopping area. So, that would be the first amendment, would be the tables. And then, the second amendment I will be asking for a vote for when we can vote is when it would be under standards and finding of fact that would... The zoning board would be asked to consider a specific finding of fact, and here's what it would be, or condition. When reviewing a conditional use application for a proposed retail big-box establishment use, a finding shall be made that the proposed use will not have an undue adverse economic impact on the community. The finding shall be based upon data provided by an economic and fiscal impact study conducted by a qualified analyst selected by the city and shall be paid for by a fee assessed to the applicant. What that's all about is, gee whiz, when... I remember when one big-box store was coming to a location close to my district, big one. And the hardware, the local hardware stores all through that section of the city were petrified to death. One was in Hampden, one was up in Roland Park, one was over in Waverly. And very successful, all of them, but small, not big boxes, were very worried, specifically worried, that they were going to get wiped out when that one big box opened, although it would have been allowed to open actually where it was going to locate because it was a big enough area, although I'm not sure what it was zoned. But actually, what happened was that that development never went forward. All those little hardware stores are thriving, everybody's happy. But the concern is, these big-box stores, if improperly located, can wipe out smaller businesses and be out of scale for neighborhoods. So, that's why... So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity to talk about it, and I hope that we'll have a chance on the 13th to vote on those remaining two amendments.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask the councilwoman if she would be interested in a friendly amendment that would, based on the rationale under which big-box establishments would not be allowed in C1 and C2, by that logic, they should be permitted in 4 and 5?
I don't follow the logic, but I'd be happy to discuss that with my honorable friend from the 4th district between now and the 13th of October. Yeah, I mean, there's lots of things in the zoning code that are, you know, are not permitted just because they're not conditional.
Okay.
If you follow me.
We'll talk offline.
Yeah. I'll be happy to talk with you.
Okay.
And I would like, I'd appreciate it to hear from people who represent districts with a lot of C4 and C5 zoning districts because I have almost none of that category.
To the committee, this isn't my district, but I'm concerned because I'm getting a lot of emails and phone calls. This was brought up, since this is a work session, was brought up last week about, it's the Councilman Craft's district, that he couldn't be here tonight, and I need to talk to him. But it was up around the Haven Street in the industrial area. They want to convert into residential. And I'm hoping that there's some... Because we've been getting emails, all the council people on the committee, and phone calls, and meeting people on the streets, is I'd like to hear from the Maryland Port Administration, the Maryland Motor Truck, because that's a truck route, and I want to know what effect that's going to have on my district and even some of the other districts in the city of Baltimore. Is it just going to... Is it just that one area that's going to be affected? And it's some questions and concerns that the committee has, and I've been asked to bring that out into the public. So, is there anyone here from the Maryland Port Administration, the Motor Truck Industrial Group, anyone can want to come up and...
Good evening, Chairman Reisinger. My name is Jill Lemke. I'm here tonight representing the Maryland Port Administration.
Okay. The one question I have is basically, if this passes to where it goes residential, what effect is that going to have, like, in my district, even though we have the maze out around Curtis Avenue and some other industrial... I've got a number of industrial parks in my district. What effect would that have, if any?
The truck routes and the rail lines that run through this area of Haven Street service the whole region, including other parts of the city. These are the only rail lines that lead to the port terminals at Secret Marine Terminal and Dundalk Marine Terminal, which is where a bulk of where our general cargo comes from. In terms of impact, it would impact any other industrial concerns that either ship by rail or by truck and utilize both the resources available at the Port of Baltimore and at other related industries along the rail line. So, there are some synergies between various companies. So, not everything is going to go on rail. Some of it's going to go by truck. If Domino Sugar is shipping sugar up to H&amp;S Bakery, they're going to be shipping it by truck, not by rail.
Domino Sugar?
Yeah. So, I think these rail lines are the main line from the port to the rest of the economy. As Jim Dwyer, the Director of Planning, said at the last hearing, the Port of Baltimore is an economic engine for the state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore. Thirty percent of the 13,000-plus direct jobs that are affiliated with the port directly are held by residents of the city of Baltimore. I myself am a resident of the city of Baltimore. And these jobs pay 16% above the statewide median average, and Maryland is one of the wealthiest states in the country. So, that is a significant family-supporting wage. So, all of those things are sort of in the balance. And at the port, we like to say that the truck routes and the rail lines are like our arteries. If the Port of Baltimore is the heart of the regional economy and you cut off our arteries, the regional economy is going to suffer because that's where the freight moves. We can't have a healthy port without being able to move the freight in and out of the port.
Okay. One of the grand rules I have is please turn off your cell phones and smartphones. You give courtesy, they're just going to testify. Anyone have a question, Warren?
I do.
We have Councilman Warren Branch just came in. Good evening, Councilman. So, does anyone else... Councilwoman Clark? Go ahead. Use the microphone.
So, all right. So, what are we talking about? We're talking about transform and a rezoning proposal, right?
Right. And I have maps that could clarify if I might pass them out.
Yes, please.
The map...
Go back to the microphone.
The maps I'm handing out, one is the truck route map that shows a little bit more of the context of where the trains are going. Some folks may not realize that the two main lines that go through this area, one is managed by CSX, one is controlled by Norfolk Southern. And the larger context map shows where their rail lines are located. The map, the other map, on the back of the other map is a list of the properties that we're most concerned about. These properties, front or back, and in some cases, both, front and back, onto a major truck route or one or both of the rail lines.
And so, they're... What is... It's my fault. I missed what you said. What are they being... What are they... And what are they being zoned to?
They are currently zoned M1 or M2.
So, that's industrial zoning?
Yes. The Transform Baltimore proposed the properties, 90% of them, to be I2.
That would be industrial...
Industrial.
Two.
One to be industrial, light industrial, and one to be industrial mixed use, which is, these proposals were proposals that we supported because they helped buffer the existing residential areas from the main rail lines and the truck routes. The proposed amendment that we're opposing would amend these properties to C2, R8, and/or industrial mixed use, and those are delineated on the list. And that is what we're here to oppose.
So, you're... Wait a minute. You're opposing... I'm sorry. Say it again. It's a lot of... What are you against?
We are opposed to rezoning 4401 Eastern Avenue from industrial mixed use to C2.
You don't want it to be C2?
Right.
That's commercial?
Yes. Commercial with residential.
Commercial with residential. What do you want it to be if you had your wishes?
Industrial mixed use is the appropriate use for that property.
That's the planning's recommendation.
That is the planning department's recommendation.
And that's what you want?
Yes. And there are... Do you want me to read each part?
Many properties on their list.
Yeah. Should I go through each one?
Sure.
There are a block of properties that are commonly known as Chesapeake Iron and Metal.
Oh, I know it well.
There are four parcels involved in that property. The planning department's recommendation was I2 because that reflects...
Industrial...
Industrial 2, which is heavy industrial. That was the planning department's recommendation because of the existing use of the property and because of its location. The proposed amendments would change that to C2, which is also high-density residential mixed-use commercial.
So, what are you asking for?
I1 or I2.
Industrial 1 or industrial 2?
Yes. Industrial 2...
Well, why... So, you're here asking for a bunch of properties that are being zoned...
We are in favor of the way the planning department had them rezoned under transform.
You're supporting the planning department's amendments for those parcels?
Yes. We are opposing the council members' amendments for those properties.
And why?
Eight properties. Because allowing residential along the rail lines and the truck routes will effectively cut off our ability to ship freight in and out of the Port of Baltimore. That is the briefest way to say it.
But they're not going to build on the tracks?
They have, in the past, built within 50 feet of the tracks. If you go to the O'Donnell Square PUD and look at the crossing, I have a video. I only have it on my iPad, but it shows the train going within 50 feet of brand-new town homes. So, developers will build that close to the rail line. And this is the main rail line. I forgot to mention that this rail line is the only rail line that leads to the Howard Street Tunnel, which we are going to be investing millions of dollars expanding so that the Port of Baltimore can remain competitive in a global marketplace.
I've got to ask one more question. So, okay, so, all right, so, it's... People are going to buy houses next to a railroad track, and you think it's going to hurt the ports, the way the port gets served?
Yes. Because once they move in, they realize that there are actually trains there. There are occasions where...
You mean the neighbors?
Yes.
They didn't know that?
I can't testify on their behalf, but it appears as though they did not know that, or they were told that the trains don't run.
Do a house tour at 4:00 AM. Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I forgot where I was.
I'm sorry. I was... I'm sorry. That was my fault.
That's okay. Once residential starts to move in to the area, whether it's apartments or townhomes, they start complaining about the noise and the dust and the trucks that are there 24/7.
I got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. No one else? I'd like to hear from the Maryland Motor Truck regards to the truck traffic that I see it in my district on Curtis Avenue in Pennington. So, what effect would this have on, since that's a truck route? I wish we'd had somebody here from DOT.
We do.
We do.
We have Patrick Fleming.
All right. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Rosser. Craig Talbot, Vice President with Maryland Motor Truck Association.
Lift up the mic. Put it to you, yeah, so we can hear you. Go ahead.
All right. Hear me now?
Yeah.
Sound like commercial?
Yeah, industry itself.
Craig Talbot, Maryland Motor Truck Association, Vice President. The effect is hundreds of trucks daily, once that becomes a residential, because the folks are going to move in there residentially. They're not going to realize the noise that's created by the trucks. We represent about 1,100 members, trucking companies in the state of Maryland, Giant Foods, Safeway, Rucker Terminal, H&amp;S Bakery, Northeast Foods. And Haven Street and Baltimore Street, H&amp;S Bakery or Northeast Foods, if you will, has a large processing plant there for the rolls. There are trucks in and out of there almost 24/7. They complement their location down on Caroline Street and also up there on Moravia Park Drive up in the northeast section of town. Right now, that's a truck route. It's an authorized truck route through city planning. It's been approved. It's on the truck map right now. They come into Paleski Highway, Route 40, if you will, come right down Haven Street, can go all the way down Haven Street. There's another company, Monumental Supply, the rail yards for Norfolk Southern, CSX, Rucker Terminal. Rucker Terminals, all the way down at the end, down by Boston Street. It's a truck route. It's many, many trucks on there, and our fear is, along with the port, that's going to be closed down, it's going to be prohibited for trucks to go on there if a residential area is put up into there, into that location. I'm not going to rehash everything that the lady from the port, she did an excellent job of describing the traffic there. This traffic is also going to be, would be compounded, if you're not going to be able to be on the residential areas that were planned on Haven Street, O'Donnell, eastern up in that area, you're going to lose down into Curtis Bay, some of the movements, especially with the intermodal freight and the warehousing, that's all contingent in that area upon the truck routes to move efficiently. We've got a large yard, Pike Corps, off of Lombard Street, that also utilizes Haven Street in the, to get over to their location, just, I guess, northeast of the John Hopkins Hospital. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, right now, because your office used to be in Mall Park, where I lived at, and you guys-
Yes, sir.
But, but regards to some of your members, I mean, they have a GPS to tell them which way they should go, but some of them still go through residential neighborhoods, and that's what we don't want.
Right.
So I'm not trying to lead you in anything, but if this was to pass, what effect would that have? Would we see more trucks going through residential neighborhoods?
I think you would, because a lot of the trucks that are operated by drivers that are not familiar with this area, they're from out of state, out of the area, completely foreign. GPS is a wonderful system if you have a car, but for most trucks, it's not going to tell you about low overhead bridges, restricted roads, restricted bridges, that type of information. And it's very scant for trucking.
Okay. Anyone have? No? Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Costello.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out, in representing one of the districts that the port resides in, just the significance of the economic activity in the port. In terms of the entire metropolitan region, we probably output about $180 billion of economic activity annually, and about a third of that comes from the Port of Baltimore alone. So I would just respectfully request that you, Mr. Chairman, and the committee, be sensitive to that when the committee's reviewing this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to hear, I mean, because last week, we didn't have the testimony, but I'm, like, again, I'm getting emails, the Maryland Pollets, anybody here from the Maryland Pollets that want to testify? You're good? Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Jeff Fraley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to answer any question that you may have about the corridor and our opposition to Councilman Craft's amendments. I feel like I'm almost an expert in this field over the last two weeks, so please fire away with any concern. I'd first like to start out with the obvious. One of these proposed developments is dead in the middle of two rail routes with nothing else there. You've got a Norfolk Southern line, you've got a CSX line, and you have industrial property in between. And to the west, where the CSX line is, immediately adjacent to that is Haven Street, the truck route. There's amendment now to have that property in between the railroad tracks rezoned for a developer to come in to be able to build mixed-use residential and commercial. I'm just pointing out the obvious mistakes that we can allow to happen if we were to pass these amendments as proposed. Now, you can ask me any questions you want. It was brought to my attention earlier that properties north of O'Donnell Street should be redeveloped into residential because it makes sense. Well, it doesn't make sense to me, and it doesn't make sense to the Port of Baltimore, because below these properties and above these properties, or north and south, are major railroads, major rail spurs, major industrial businesses, and one hell of a freight route that we cannot afford to jeopardize. So unless anybody can explain the practicality to me of building townhomes or mixed-use development in between two major freight lines that have been here since the 1700s, I'm all ears.
Councilman Henry?
I can't answer that, but since you paused, I was going to take the opportunity to ask a question.
Thank you.
Okay. The, I, we're hampered a little bit in, I think, the most productive discussion of this by not having Councilman Craft here as both the sponsor of the amendment and, and here's the key part, the person who represents that district, all the people and property owners there. I'm not as familiar with this area. How close is the closest existing residential neighborhood to the piece of property that is being dealt with in this amendment?
Jill said 50 feet. I think it's more, about 30 feet, and we can play a video for you.
That's the, that, oh, wait, no, I mean, the existing, like, an existing residential neighborhood, there's already one right there.
So the rail line, the rail line to the east of this site has an Atgrave Crossing at Fate, and it was the crossing to get into Crown Court Concealed Property, which I might add has 20-plus businesses there right now. It's not vacant, nor is Cambridge Iron, the property in question. And about 30 to 50 feet east of that rail line, that Atgrave rail line, there are three-story residential units, three-story townhomes.
Okay. So has, has either your group as a group, or have members of your group interacted with those communities?
Yes.
And where, where are they on this issue?
Well, when they come out of the house to talk to you, typically their eyes are red from train whistles blowing all night and no sleep, as my colleague Brian Hammack can explain to you, because he's actually the Legislative Affairs Representative for CSX in the Mid-Atlantic region, he goes out and puts out all these fires. And I'm sure Councilman Craft could tell you the same. Councilman Henry knows a lot about, I'm sorry, Councilman Cole knows a lot about it over in District 10 prior to Councilman Costello, because as Silo Point went up-
Yeah.
Councilman Henry, I mean, Councilman Cole was faced with the phone calls. And you ask about, Mary Pat, you ask, or Councilwoman Clark, you ask about the obvious and people moving into these neighborhoods where rail lines are. I took a tour of Silo Point when it was, when it was the new place to be, and a realtor told me that they were doing away with those railroads.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. So I was really looking hard to spend over half a million bucks to live on top of a locking rail system 24 hours a day. And those fancy bells and whistles you hear at night, oh, they're going to go away also. So you can't blame it on the homeowner. Of course, they're about 99% at fault here for not opening their eyes, but they're moving in. They're taking residence, and the only thing they can do once they move in, because they're locked, is to complain to you guys, which thus negatively impacts our business.
And then try to encourage further restriction of the industrial-
It's a slippery slope. What you have here is a perfect, as I like to describe, mechanical chase for freight in and out of the Port of Baltimore. If we bottleneck it right here, who knows what the long-term effect is? But I can tell you this, the real jobs in this city are made right there on that dock. And it's our obligation to protect them, so. And as far as Councilman Reisinger, as far as flooding into other districts, just imagine the precedent this will set for our district down in District 11. I can hear it now. And I can't even imagine if we're allowed to build so irresponsibly between-
He means dead.
In our district. I can't imagine, you know, the precedent that would be able to be looked at when they're considering, you know, building adjacent to the freight routes in Curtis Bay and Fairfield.
Okay. Anyone else? You got something to add, and we're going to move on.
In response-
You want to use the microphone and introduce yourself again?
Jill Lemke with Maryland Port Administration, again, in response to Councilman Henry's question about whether or not we reached out to some of the residential communities around this area, which includes Highland Town and Canton and those areas. And we, I did have a conversation with the Southeast CDC, and in the book of comments, the book of comments and amendments, the Southeast CDC has expressed opposition to changing the zoning proposed for that Crown Court Concealed Property, which is in between the two major rail lines from IMU to C2, and states that the IMU is the most appropriate use for that parcel. IMU does allow a certain amount of residential, which, in full disclosure, I used to work for the planning department and have been involved in Transform Baltimore for a number of years. So having met with them in my prior life, the plan was to do the residential along Eastern Avenue, which is somewhat buffered by the rail lines because they're elevated at that point. But we have reached out to the community, and I think there is agreement that we should not repeat the same mistake that we made in O'Donnell Square.
Okay, yeah. Patrick Fleming from DOT, you want to? I know you've been here since 12 o'clock. My question is that, my question is that DOT, what's her name, did the traffic study for the whole city?
Valerie.
Valerie, yeah. And she came into my district, and she did a traffic study of the whole city.
Right.
So what does that, during that traffic study, where's that come in with this, when Haven Street?
The study to look at establishing truck routes throughout the city of Baltimore, officially designated, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure how the new zoning will overlay exactly with the existing truck routes. I do believe that this, that, from what it appears that they're talking about, I'm not overly familiar with the amendment, I apologize, because I did come late to this whole process, but it sounds like it would off, it would potentially create a zoning layer, a zoning district in an area that would create a new residential neighborhood in an already heavy industrial area, which is served, you know, which is already a truck route, has a lot of railroad operations. So it appears that it would create new opportunities for residents, to put residences in areas that would conflict with truck and heavy, you know, heavy uses.
Okay. Any, any questions from the committee? Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'm also a CDL truck driver, and I'll tell you from experience, truck drivers are a lot like water. We flow to the path of least resistance. If we lock up Haven Street, you better believe there's going to be a large amount of trucks in the neighborhoods of Butcher Hill and Ken, thus resulting in phone calls to you guys, more restriction on our work, negatively impacting the port and the industrial communities. Adios to the jobs. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
My name's, I'm Harry Halpert. I represent MTC Logistics. We're located right now by the Secret Marine Terminal, but I'm only 50, or about to be 50, and since 1984, I've worked in Highland Town. That's where our first warehouse was, actually, second warehouse. We were speaking a bit earlier about that transportation line along Haven Street. People know that. I mean, I've driven up and down that road ever since I was, I'm 16 years old, knowing that that's the truck route. All of the business, or a lot of the business we're doing right now, leaves from around Boston Street, heads right up Haven Street. And the other point regarding jobs, the folks that come to work for us, they all live in those neighborhoods. I mean, they'll walk to work in the wintertime. So I just hate to see the roads closed down, the trucks, because it's going to impact jobs. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else before we conclude? Okay. This concludes the work session. Again, our next Transform Baltimore hearing is scheduled for October the 13th at 5:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Thank you. Go ahead. I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing. Please check the area around your seat to make certain that you have everything that you brought with you. Thank you.